Buenas tardes, bienvenidos al foro de la Liga de Mujeres de Voto. Hoy vamos a presentar candidatos del Consejo de Ciudad de Oxnard para los distritos 5 y 6. Un pequeño recordatorio sobre cómo funciona esto. Si tienes un teléfono celular con tu carro, por favor, apaga o vibrá. Y tomamos las preguntas del público. Así que si tienes una pregunta, levanta tu mano uno de nuestros voluntarios. Te traerán nuestras tarjetas de index. Puedes llenarlo. También tenemos lápices. Y solo levanta cuando quieras que lo recogamos. Puedes hacer tantas preguntas como quieras. Lo haré todo lo posible para tratar de dar todas las preguntas respondidas. Iniciamos aleatoriamente. Empezaremos desde el extremo más lejos con Viene. Trayamos hasta Gabriela. Lo revansamos al final. Soy David Merritt, miembro de la Liga de Mujeres de Voto. Todos los voluntarios aquí, sus camisetas azules, están aquí para ayudarte hoy. Candidatos, tienes un minuto para tus declaraciones y respuestas. Nuestros relojes están aquí. Te darán señales cuando te quedan 15 segundos. Luego, detenemos. Así que con eso, ¿por qué no empezamos? Vamos a comenzar con nuestro primer candidato, Viene López. Gracias por presentarlo. En realidad, os pedimos que dejéis el aplauso. No hacemos aplausos en este foro para que podamos pasar por todos. Supongo que estabas aplaudiendo a mí, ¿verdad? Okay, por favor, detente. Okay, Viene, empezaremos contigo.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Quiero agradecer a la Liga de Mujeres de Voto por organizar este foro en el lado sur de Oxnard. Mi nombre es Viene López y voy a representar al Consejo de Ciudad de Oxnard. Durante los últimos 26 años he vivido en este distrito. He crecido aquí. He visto esta área, esta parte de la ciudad mejorar. He visto los problemas que tiene y he visto las mejoras. Pero también creo que hay mucho más espacio para un cambio que beneficiará a nuestra comunidad aquí. Este es el primer año en que vamos a elegir nuestro consejo por distritos. Lo que significa que también tenemos una gran oportunidad de tener una voz fuerte en el Consejo de Ciudad. Y es por eso que estoy representando. Como director de distrito para uno de nuestros miembros de asamblea en esta área, miembro de la Asamblea de Mónique Limón y ex congresista Lois Capps, entiendo la necesidad de servir a nuestros constituyentes, de servir a nuestra comunidad. Y quiero escuchar de ustedes durante este tiempo para que podamos tener una buena representación en nuestro Consejo de Ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias. Apóyo a nuestro siguiente candidato, Carolina Dierno.
Hola, a todos. Gracias por estar aquí y gracias por tomarte el tiempo de la familia. Mi nombre es Carolina Vallarromagana. Tengo 52 años, una mujer casada. Tengo cuatro hijos, tres nietos. Estoy representando al Distrito 6 porque me encargo de mi comunidad y el éxito de nuestra ciudad. Trabajo para una organización no privada que ofrece a individuos con discapacidad intelectual, de tipo autismo, síndrome de Down, disconocimiento bipolar y, entre otros, necesidades especiales durante unos 25 años. Soy la oficina de gestión principal de una organización no privada que ofrece a personas con discapacidad intelectual. Antes de eso, trabajé en las áreas. Fui un trabajador de semillas de arándanos. Trabajé coseciando arándanos. Trabajé en las jardines. Trabajé llevando a mano. Sé dónde ir para vivir, de tarjeta a tarjeta. Y sé que pago a mis personas en el sur de Oxnard y toda la ciudad.
Bueno, Carolina, tu pregunta es la siguiente.
Vale.
Okay, vamos a continuar. Nuestro siguiente candidato es Luis Garcia.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Gracias por invitarnos. Mi nombre es Luis Garcia Moreira. Soy un banquero local de la comunidad. Y quiero usar mi carrera de banquero de 32 años para mejorar la dirección de Oxnard. He tenido la suerte de tener la oportunidad de liderar y co-liderar, de estar involucrado en las comités y las agrupaciones que han establecido departamentos, con planes de negocio nuevos y productos y servicios de calidad mientras aumentan los ingresos anuales. He dirigido proyectos de distrito en los que han involucrado al Distrito 12 del Banco Federal Reserve y seis estados del sur de Estados Unidos. Directamente negociado contratos multimillonarios con vendedores y remapado departamentos enteros que han hecho que los procesos sean más eficientes, aumentado los empleos, mantuvonos en cumplimiento con todos los mandatos estatales y federales. Y hemos tenido mucha diversión. También ser educado por una madre sola durante los años 70 y 80 en centro, sur, centro de ONU me ha dado la fuerza y el hábito de trabajo para apreciar a las personas a todos los niveles. Creo que mi carrera profesional, mi experiencia personal me ha dado todos los instrumentos necesarios para hacer que Oxnard sea un lugar mejor donde trabajar. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestro siguiente candidato es Francine Castaneda.
Hola, mi nombre es Francine Castaneda. Gracias a todos por venir esta noche. Es martes por la noche. Hay buenos pasajes en la TV y ustedes acudieron aquí, así que gracias. Soy residente de la ciudad y he visto lo bueno, lo malo y lo malvado. Y estoy cansada del malvado. Hubo personas que habitaron, como la ex presidenta Rivera, por la pobreza cuando había dinero. Y fue rechazada. La persona que estaba sentada allí le dijo a su cara que no, no vamos a tratar de pobreza porque todo el mundo se pondría aquí en Oxnard. Simplemente se pondrían aquí de todos modos. Esa fue la percepción que dio él para nuestra ciudad. Eso es un montón de broma. Tenemos algunas de las mejores ingenuidades de esta ciudad. Tenemos grandes residentes, tenemos buenas personas. Y es hora de que hagamos una voz. Estoy enfermo y cansada de ser rechazada. Estoy enfermo y cansada de ser dada lo que podemos y no podemos. Nuestra ciudad nunca estableció un acuerdo laboral de proyecto para dar nuestros jóvenes los salarios que pagan 18 dólares por hora. ¿Por qué no merecen eso? Dices que quieres hacer algo para los jóvenes. Pues pon tus dinero donde estés y vamos a hacerlo.
Gracias. Nuestro siguiente candidato es Lawrence Stein.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Lawrence Stein. Soy residente de Oxnard desde 1982. Vengo a agradecer la oportunidad de hablar ante este órgano. He estado involucrado en temas de ciudad desde 1992. Voy a elegir cada posición en la ciudad y nunca he sido elegido, pero nunca he perdido una elección. Al representar mi cargo, presento ideas. Ahora, si esas ideas son adoptadas, entonces las quiero. Es fácil hacerlo si soy elegido, pero si estoy en el lado de la diosa. El personal me dijo hace dos semanas que no responderían mis preguntas cuando fuese elegido. Así que saben que he estado haciendo preguntas durante 20 años y no obtienen respuestas. Encontraré problemas, identificaré esos problemas y a veces los problemas se resolverán. Me gustaría que votaran en mí porque soy la persona más astuta en la ciudad en esta diosa. Sé de todos los temas de la ciudad y he trabajado con los futuros de la ciudad durante más de 20 años. Por favor, voten en mí, Lawrence Stein.
Gracias. Nuestro siguiente candidato es Gabriela Basu.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Primero, quiero agradecer a la Liga de Mujeres de Voto por organizar este foro aquí esta noche y a todos aquí. Gracias a la Liga de Mujeres de Voto por organizar este foro y a todas las personas presentes aquí. Un poco sobre mí mismo. Fui educada en los barrios de La Moronia, Limón y el sur de Oxnard. Soy graduada de la Escuela de Chanau Islands, de la Universidad de Oxnard y de la Universidad de Lurum. Soy esposa, madre de tres. Y he vivido en el área de la escuela estatal durante más de 16 años. También soy serviente público. Trabajo para la ciudad de Port Huaynimi. He trabajado para la ciudad durante más de 15 años. Todos mis 15 años han estado en la Audiencia de Hacienda donde soy responsable de las operaciones diarias de la Audiencia de Hacienda. Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí con ustedes hoy y espero sus preguntas.
Gracias. Así que la forma en que nos hemos preparado es que había un tercer candidato para el Distrito 5. Elizabeth White no pudo estar aquí. Así que a mi lado de este escenario tenemos a Lawrence Stein y Gabriela Basu. Hay candidatos para el Distrito 5. Si vives en ese distrito, votarás por uno. Si vives en el Distrito 6, tenemos los cuatro candidatos de la otra parte de la mesa. Tenemos materiales de la ciudad de Oxnard que muestran mapas de los distritos 5 y 6. Y votarán por ellos. Pero la razón por la que la Liga lo ha preparado de esta manera es que pensamos que quizás quieran saber quién representa a ustedes en otras partes de la ciudad. Porque todos estos candidatos que se electan tienen que representar a toda la ciudad. Así que con eso, vamos a comenzar nuestras preguntas. Vamos a saltar a candidatos. Y en realidad empezamos con Francine. Y la primera pregunta de Francine es sobre el parque de la escuela estatal. Específicamente, ¿cuál es su plan para traer el parque de la escuela estatal a Dakota? Ahora mismo el parque está secado, inundado, engrasado y otros problemas. ¿Cuáles son sus planes?
Así que yo conduzco por ese parque todos los días. Mi hija es de la Escuela de Chanau Islands. Ella está en el programa de transición allí. Así que todos los días ellos conducen por ese parque. Y debido a la cantidad de hierba secada, la cantidad de neglecto, engrasado de los árboles, incluso hay un parque que tiene pequeños rascacielos allí. Y el hecho de que conduzcan por la iglesia, la calle se acelera y hace difícil el tráfico. Los niños no pueden jugar allí. Y cuando los niños salen de Chanau Islands al campo trasero allí, es imposible conseguir tráfico y niños por allí. Hay que hacer un estudio allí. Y conseguir que la ciudad haga cualquier tipo de estudio de tráfico a lo largo de Chanau Islands, carreteras, caminos a lo largo de la escuela, yo tendría mejor suerte de conseguir que Congressa seleccionara un tipo de pizza ahora mismo que lo haga. Y hemos discutido sobre nuestros parques. Lateral Park donde vivo, sin vacantes. Facilidades submantenidas, engrasadas o secadas. No hay cuidado aquí. No importa cuántas llamadas 311, no importa cuántos correos electrónicos, simplemente se ignoran.
Gracias, Francine. Viene, tú tienes la siguiente pregunta. Same pregunta para ti sobre el parque de la escuela estatal, que es la de Rivera.
Así que creo que necesitamos ver cómo funciona nuestro departamento de trabajo público. ¿Cómo se distribuyen nuestros recursos? No hay duda de que el sur de Oxnard ha enfrentado muchos problemas con la atención y nuestra necesidad en esta área. Así que creo que primero necesitamos ver cómo funciona el departamento para asegurar que esos servicios se distribuyen igualmente a lo largo de la ciudad para que podamos traer parte de esa atención al parque de la escuela estatal para asegurarse de que está limpiado, que se ve decente y que nos permita sentir cómodos en la comunidad donde vivimos.
Gracias, Lawrence. Semeña para ti.
La pregunta es si no es solo un parque de vecindario. Se trata de todos los parques de la ciudad. ¿Y de dónde viene el dinero? El mayor objetivo que tenemos es la seguridad pública. Si tomáramos 8 millones de dólares de seguridad pública en un año, en los próximos seis años, eso es 48 millones de dólares. El Consejo de Ciudad necesita empezar a analizar las fases de financiación para los ingresos. Si tomáramos 8 millones de dólares al año de seguridad pública, perderíamos 3 policías por año. Personalmente, considerando la calidad de servicio que tiene el Departamento de Policía, no notaría un 15% disminución en la seguridad pública debido a la falta de responsabilidad que recibimos ya. Pero el problema real es que antes de hablar de arreglar un parque o dos parques, el Consejo de Ciudad necesita identificar el financiamiento y tener al personal hacer recomendaciones así como a dónde vendrán los recursos de financiación para pagar los cruces y no solo los parques.
Gracias. Nuestro siguiente candidato es Carolina sobre el parque de la escuela estatal.
Sí, estoy de acuerdo, pero como algunos de los candidatos están diciendo, no es solo el parque de la escuela. Creo que nuestra preocupación es que la mayoría de los parques estén en Oxnard, específicamente el sur de Oxnard. Y necesitamos ver cómo se distribuyen los fondos para los parques. Y una vez asegurezca que puedo incluir el presupuesto y vea si es necesario ponerlos entre los parques de la ciudad. Eso es lo que quiero decir.
Perfecto, gracias. Pasamos a nuestro siguiente candidato, que es Gabriela.
El parque de la escuela estatal es muy lejos de mi casa. Veo el uso de él todos los días. Estoy de acuerdo que deberíamos enfocar más nuestro interés en otros parques. Pero parte del foco del parque de la escuela estatal es el uso que toma. Todos los días tenemos nuestros soccer teams all there y es genial tenerlos all there. Pero también necesitamos utilizar nuestros otros campos para asegurar que restemos el parque de la escuela. Estoy de acuerdo, necesitamos hablar con nuestro departamento de trabajo público y asegurarnos de que tengamos los recursos disponibles para que esos parques sean usados.
Gracias. Luis, terminaremos contigo. ¿Cuáles son tus planes para el parque de la escuela estatal?
Creo que necesitamos revisar lo que está haciendo el trabajo de trabajo público para no solo el parque de la escuela estatal sino todos los parques a lo largo de nuestra ciudad. También creo que necesitamos revisar nuestro presupuesto para asegurarnos de que los recursos y los fondos sean propiamente asignados. Y creo que necesitamos que haya gente ahí, realmente, gente ahí para limpiarlo. Y también creo que necesitamos usar todos nuestros parques para todo lo recreativo y realmente esparcirlo para que todos tengan acceso igual.
Gracias. Y vamos a comenzar la siguiente pregunta contigo, Larry. El puerto de Huaynimi es un importante punto económico. El puerto tiene oportunidades de trabajar con la ciudad en crecimiento. Y estoy seguro de que muchas personas que viven en estos distritos en realidad trabajan en el puerto. Así que dime, ¿cuál cree que debería ser la relación entre la ciudad y el puerto? ¿Seguiría su crecimiento?
El puerto es uno de los principales impulsores en nuestra comunidad. Pero el impacto que el puerto tiene en la ciudad no ha sido abordado por la ciudad. Un caso en punto es la Avenida Rice. La Avenida Rice es supuesta ser un terreno de terreno de tráfico de camión que viene por la calle 101 y se trata a lo largo de Chanau Islands o por Huaynimi Road para manejar el tráfico de camiones. No se ha mantenido este terreno de terreno de tráfico. Este terreno de terreno era supuesto ser una carretera estatal. Fue imparcialmente construido, así que no más se meete con las líneas de la carretera estatal. La ciudad necesita trabajar con el puerto. Pero lo más importante, tienes que darse cuenta de que el puerto es su propia entidad privada que está ganando dinero. La ciudad no está en una posición de ganar dinero, sino distribuir fondos igualmente.
Gracias. Luis, misma pregunta para ti. ¿Cuáles son tus opiniones sobre el puerto, trabajar con el puerto? ¿Seguiría su crecimiento?
Seguiría su crecimiento. Creo que el puerto traerá más salarios de alta calidad a la ciudad. El Distrito 6 y el puerto de Huaynimi compartimos una frontera. Y por eso creo que compartimos muchas cosas en común. Creo que lo que necesitamos hacer es reunirnos con el puerto y averiguar cuáles son sus prioridades. Y que ellos averigüen cuáles son nuestras prioridades. Y reunirnos a medio camino o tratar de encontrar una forma para que ambos corramos. Así que creo que eso es lo que necesitamos hacer. Sentarse, discutir, descubrir cuáles son nuestras prioridades, cuáles son sus prioridades y llegar a un punto.
Viene, misma pregunta para ti.
El puerto trae empleos a esta comunidad. Y es muy importante que la ciudad de Oxnard trabaje bien con el puerto. Pero también necesitamos entender que el puerto sirve a toda la región. Oxnard no es la única ciudad que debe llevar el peso de ella. Así que necesitamos mirar a nuestras ciudades vecinas cercanas para que todos trabajemos juntos. Para que si hay interés en la expansión, estamos mirando al panorama más grande de dónde va a pasar eso en lugar de centrarnos en el impacto aquí en Oxnard.
Okay, gracias. Gabriela, misma pregunta para ti.
Necesitamos ser buenos vecinos con el puerto y trabajar juntos para lograr la última meta, que es unir a nuestra comunidad para mejorar nuestra comunidad y traer empleos a nuestra comunidad. Así que apoyo el trabajo que está haciendo el puerto mientras estamos hablando y comunicando con nuestras metas y necesidades.
Gracias. Y Francine, misma pregunta.
Así que escuché sobre la expansión del puerto. Y actualmente es solo una idea. No tienen ningún plan escrito. No hay imágenes mostrando lo que están anticipando. Es solo algo que esperan hacer. Son un distrito especial, son una entidad independiente y están proyectando cómo esperan y anticipan crecer si las cosas van como hacen. Es la responsabilidad de la ciudad mantener esas comunicaciones. Pero es nuestro trabajo como residentes asegurarnos de estar en la mesa para que nuestros residentes sean contratados si se expanden y si son nuestros empleos. Y que sean buenos empleos porque voy a tener a la gente que trabaje por 10 dólares por hora cuando pueden llegar a 15 o 16. Así que tenemos que ser realistas y prácticos.
Gracias. Carolina, terminaremos contigo.
Tenemos que tener una buena comunicación con nuestros vecinos, con el puerto. Y creo que necesitamos involucrar a nuestra comunidad. Y necesitamos obtener la input de la comunidad porque al final del día son los que más serán afectados, especialmente la comunidad en el sur de Oxnard. Así que sería mejor sentarse con el puerto y ver su proyecto. Y nuevamente, obtener la input de la comunidad y podemos tomar decisiones con eso.
Okay, gracias. Vamos a seguir contigo, Carolina, para la siguiente pregunta. Cuéntanos sobre tus opiniones o tu visión realmente para Ormon Beach.
Ormon Beach, es un gran potencial. Mi visión para Ormon Beach es preservar nuestros bosques. Y mi visión es tener algún tipo de, no purificarlo, enriquecerlo y tenerlo no solo recreativo, sino educativo. Donde podemos llevar a nuestros hijos y ellos puedan ver la naturaleza. Y tenemos, hay una burra, trabajo en el nombre de la burra, y vive allí. Así que creo que tenemos que preservar eso para futuras generaciones.
Okay, gracias. Y vamos a Francine para tus opiniones sobre Ormon Beach.
Así que Ormon Beach es usado mucho por la Universidad de Oxnard. Hay seis o siete profesores que llevan a sus estudiantes all there todos los semestres para mostrarles la belleza, los recursos y la naturaleza, los pájaros, los huevos y cómo funcionan esos ciclos. Y van all there para las clases de oceanografía y aprenden sobre el agua. Pero debería dejarlo solo. Tan pronto como el humano toque la naturaleza, se vuelve a la luz. Y eso ha sido evidente. La gente ha estado luchando durante años para proteger Ormon. Necesitamos tenerlo protegido federalmente para que no tengamos que preocuparnos por el futuro o alguien venga a desarrollarlo, construirlo, o lo encerramos en Ormon.
Gracias. Gabriela, misma pregunta.
Estoy de acuerdo, necesitamos preservar los bosques. Necesitamos trabajar conjuntamente con la Conservancia de la Naturaleza que hace un gran trabajo. Ahora mismo tengo la oportunidad de reunirse con ellos y tienen algunas buenas ideas. Pero también tenemos el potencial de desarrollar la área. Tenemos el potencial de traer ingresos, de mostrar lo que llamo nuestro joyo oculto en el sur de Oxnard, de traer turismo, siempre que lo hagamos conservatoriamente. Siempre teniendo en cuenta que nuestro plan es conservar esos bosques.
Gracias. Viene, misma pregunta para ti.
Primero, creo que necesitamos comenzar compartiendo esta parte de la ciudad con el resto de la comunidad. No creo que mucha gente haya estado o visitado Ormon Beach, así que no entiendo el potencial que esta área tiene. Así que primero necesitamos hacer que la gente sepa y traerlos allí para que puedan ver. Y luego mirar formas de mejorar esa área y mantenerla para que permanezca el joyo que es.
Gracias. Luis, misma pregunta.
Así que conduzco a Santa Barbara cada vez que voy. Y en el camino de regreso, estaba conduciendo la calle un día y noté que había esta una carretera. Y pasé por ella y noté que UCSB tiene lugares muy específicos a lo largo de la costa que usan para fines educativos. Creo que Ormon Beach es definitivamente un joyo de Oxnard. Primero de todo, creo que necesitamos limpiarlo. Es muy sucio y tenemos pobreza aquí. Creo que esa debería ser la primera prioridad. Una vez hecho eso, obviamente tenemos que preservar esos bosques. Pero también creo que puede ser una atracción turística. Pero nuevamente, necesita ser muy específico, necesita ser muy controlado. Y creo que definitivamente puede traer más empleos aquí a Oxnard.
Gracias. Lawrence, terminaremos contigo.
Mucha gente cree que Ormon Beach es una ruta perfecta. Mucha gente olvida que hay una planta eléctrica que también se ha descomisionado. La descomisión de la planta de Ormon Beach presenta una oportunidad única donde la área puede desarrollarse con un parque y una sala de baño. Quizás un residente podría realmente conducir una atracción turística más grande y controlada. Lo que estamos haciendo ahora es que no es suficiente en tamaño para manejar el tipo de capacidad. Es necesario atraer fuertes dólares turísticos. Creo que empezamos a mirar el parque eléctrico de Ormon Beach y el plan de descomisión de ese parque presenta oportunidades únicas para ayudar al turismo y ayudar al crecimiento de Ormon Beach. Más de cinco millas de terreno de playa que necesita más protección al mismo tiempo una cierta positive economía de desarrollo.
Gracias. Y eso es en realidad una buena secuencia a nuestra siguiente pregunta también sobre el sur de Oxnard. Luis, vamos a comenzar contigo. La pregunta es sobre cuáles son tus planes para limpiar el site Halacoce y también tratar el removal de las plantas eléctricas.
Creo que la energía necesita subir, subir y asistir con el desechear de las plantas eléctricas. Sabes, han estado aquí durante mucho tiempo. Y han ganado mucho dinero de nuestras ciudades y nuestra ciudad. Y creo que necesitamos llevar sus pies al fuego y que ellos vengan y nos asistan con el desmantelamiento de las plantas. Así que ahí es donde empezaría. Empezaría hablando con ellos. Empezaría tratando de descubrir cómo podemos conseguirles asistir. Y definitivamente no intentaría usar nuestros fondos cuando ellos, sabes, han usado esa planta para beneficiarles.
Gabriela, misma pregunta para ti sobre limpiar el site Halacoce y el removal de las plantas eléctricas.
En el mundo real, ellos volverían y limiarían ellos mismos. Pero creo que es una urgencia para la comunidad conseguir que el site sea limpiado. Tenemos que trabajar juntos con nuestros representantes locales para encontrar el dinero para hacer esto rápidamente y asegurarnos de que es seguro para nuestra comunidad. Y necesitamos hacer un trabajo mejor en la ciudad. Asegurarnos de que cuando permitamos que estas empresas vengan a nuestra ciudad que hay causas en esos contratos que las tienen responsables de limpiarlas.
Gracias. Carolina, misma pregunta para ti sobre Halacoce y las plantas eléctricas.
Creo que la ciudad debe sostener a la empresa energética para eliminar la planta. Esto puede darle algo a tu vecino y luego decides moverlo, pero dejas el basura a tus vecinos. Así que eso no es correcto. Creo que deben ser responsables de removerlo. La ciudad o la ciudad debe hacerlo. Enfrentar con el estado lo más importante posible.
Gracias. Lawrence, misma pregunta para ti.
El problema real es lo que legalmente es permitible por las compañías eléctricas. Es la obligación legal de las compañías eléctricas. Y la obligación real es el hecho de que las plantas eléctricas pueden simplemente desaparecer. Los propietarios pueden declarar bancarrota, y todo el préstamo. Los contribuyentes están atrapados en la caja. Esa es la realidad económica. Los fondos deben encontrar. Hay algunos superfondos disponibles para ayudar a abordar el site Halacoce. Pero el problema real es mirar hacia las obligaciones económicas que el contratista debe a la corporación de la ciudad para reestablecer las tierras de la forma en que fueron originalmente formadas a la hora que el contrato fue firmado. La verdad es que las plantas eléctricas estaban operando a 5, 8% de capacidad en los últimos 15 años. Y realmente generan ingresos para las compañías eléctricas. No estaban operando en tiempo completo.
Gracias. Viene, misma pregunta para ti.
Creo que necesitamos aprovechar los recursos que tenemos. La ciudad de Oxnard no puede hacer esto solo para limpiar ese site, para traer esta área de vuelta a un buen estado. Así que necesitamos trabajar con nuestros representantes estatales y federales para traer algunas de esas grantes, para traer parte de ese financiamiento. Eso ya se ha hecho en el pasado, pero todavía tenemos mucho que hacer. Así que necesitamos trabajar con los diferentes niveles de gobierno para que podamos limpiarlo. Porque no seremos capaces de hacerlo por nosotros mismos. Y poner esa presión sobre nuestros residentes no va a ser posible.
Gracias. Terminaremos contigo, Francine. Halacoce y las plantas eléctricas.
Así que respecto a Halacoce, fue declarado el site de superfondo. Y eso sería nuestros representantes federales que serían responsables. Así que tendríamos que tenerlos con los recursos para nosotros para continuar limpiando y terminar limpiando Halacoce para que podamos volver a preservarlo. En cuanto a las plantas eléctricas, cuando la ciudad demandó Energy, en ningún momento de la demanda incluían una causa para que las removieran en el caso de que la ciudad quiera su demanda o que no procedieran con el plan. Ahora, lo otro es que es propiedad privada. Energy todavía posee esa tierra y posee esas plantas eléctricas. Así que sería como ir a tu casa y decir, "Sabes, no me gusta esta propiedad, voy a arruinarla porque creo que es una casa bonita". Así que necesitamos poner condiciones para que quien compra esa propiedad sea responsable del removal. Así que si van a la bancarrota o lo que sea, necesitamos asegurarnos de que estamos en la mesa diciendo esto es lo que queremos como comunidad. Entendemos que es tu propiedad privada, pero es nuestra comunidad también.
Gracias. Comenzaremos nuestra siguiente pregunta contigo, Gabriela. Así que hablemos un poco más sobre tu distrito. ¿Cuáles son tus planes para hacer tu distrito mejor? ¿Cómo planeas reunirte con los vecinos y poder limpiar algunos de los problemas aquí, como el polvo y los venenos?
Si fuese a ser elegida, lo primero que haría sería sentarme con nuestro gerente de la ciudad. Como gerente de la ciudad, él es en cargo de las operaciones diarias de la ciudad. Necesito tener un mejor conocimiento de trabajo público. Es, es malo. El sur de Oxnard es malo. El área de Limón Wood, el 711, el área de Diamond Bar tuvieron la oportunidad de visitar esos sites la semana pasada. Qué buena comunidad y comunidad muy humilde que me ha recibido en sus hogares mientras campanaba. Seré su voz. Asegurarme de que como miembro del consejo trabajaría juntos con el personal y asegurarme de que estos huecos están cerrados.
Gracias. Lawrence, misma pregunta para ti.
Todavía se reduce a dólares y centavos. Tenemos un presupuesto. Hace tres años, el presupuesto general fue 118 millones de dólares. Ahora es 136 millones de dólares. Así que el presupuesto general creció en 18 millones de dólares en los últimos tres años. How much of that has gone to the public works department? How much of that has gone to the residents of Oxnard? Most definitely has gone to public safety. Public safety is not a sacred cow. People like to see police officers, people like to see fire departments. If one fire a day, we don't need eight engines for one fire a day. Public safety budget needs to be reduced to generate more funds for the general fund for other uses and not just parks and not just for general streets. But general planning needs to have a surplus budgets, not necessarily a balanced budget.
Thank you, Fred Singh, same question. What are your plans to make your district better? How will you reach out and meet with the community?
So the biggest need of the district is understanding our resources. So the city of Oxnard currently receives approximately $25 million per year in sales tax revenue. That does not include River Park. River Park is a shared tax between county and city, is not counted into their annual revenue budget. The other thing is each department is not showing its revenue opportunity. Each department in the city is revenue generating at some level and we are not maximizing that. We are not knowing what is being spent in our district, period. Whether it's Parks and Recs Department, Refugees, Streets, Engineering, and the amount of lawsuits that are going on with the city, it also is affecting our districts. So we need to know where we're at and the amount of property tax that everybody pays in South Oxnard because I pay just as much as people in North Oxnard. And where is my money going? As far as public safety, we put Measure O. 35% of Measure O should be going to police for services, cars, vests, things like that.
Thank you, Louise, same question. What are your plans to make your district better and how will you meet with your community?
So, like all of us, I drive through the city. I drive through North Oxnard. And then I wonder when I drive into South Oxnard, what happened? We need to clean up our streets. I live off of C and Bards and I can tell you that the last time a street sweeper has come by, it's probably been once a month, even though the fainting signs say that they should come out twice a month. So I believe that what we need to do is we need to communicate with our neighborhoods, neighborhood councils, sit down and see what our needs are. And then communicate that to our city council, review our budgets, make sure that the budget is properly allocated. And then actually hold our public works feet to the fire on that. They need to step up, they need to come in, they need to clean up. They need to make us feel proud to be part of Oxnard.
Thank you, Carolina, same question.
Well, I think that what we need to do mostly in South Oxnard on my district six is we need more public justice. We need to get a fair share from Oxnard. And that means that will improve our neighborhood greatly. We don't have a fair share. In South Oxnard, we need more public justice. We have had so many shootings in the last months. We need more, clean the streets, clean the alleys. We need more help from the city, we need more support from public works. We need to see why North Oxnard is better kept than South Oxnard and why South Oxnard is being neglected. And that could be because South Oxnard people don't speak up. Why? Because they have a fear, which is understandable. But we need to speak up for our community to be better and for the city to pay attention to us.
Thank you, Bea, same question.
As an elected official, we are accountable to you as our residents or as our constituents. So we need to have communication. There is already areas where we can make ourselves available. And one of those begins with our neighborhood councils, is attending these, attending your meetings, being present to talk with you and especially hear from you on what you see is happening in your community, in your specific neighborhood, in your street. And then we can take that back. So keeping that in mind that we are accountable to you and we should be listening to you. And I would look for ways to make myself available in a public place so that we can have some of those conversations, whether they're hard or easy.
Thank you, we'll stay with you actually Bea for the next question. So if you were elected to the council, you'll be dealing with large projects to be completed. And as Oxnard expands and rebuilds with these projects, what is your view on local hire clauses and new construction contracts? I would deem that the money be spent locally in labor and would you support union apprenticeships?
There is great need to keep our funds, to keep our jobs here in the city. And so we do need to take advantage of those opportunities where we can provide economic opportunities for our residents and keep that, those funds cycling through. So I think if we can work in looking at what the need, especially with our youth in this area, and find those opportunities, bring them here so that we can keep those resources cycling through our city and contributing back.
Is everyone familiar with local hire or would you like me to explain that? So the idea is that out-of-town contractors sometimes come to the city and they use lower cost employees. So should a city go at the lowest bidder even though it may be going to LA or somewhere else? Or should the city have clauses in their construction agreements that specify local hire that they have to have a certain percentage of workers from the local area? And Carolina, we'll go to you for the same question. What is your view on local hire clauses or would you support union apprenticeships?
We should have local hire and I would support unions as long as they hire local because we should keep our revenues here in Oxnard. I don't see the need for us to have somebody come outside to come into the world. If they work here, they would spend their money here. So that's what I would support.
Thank you, Louise, same question to you, local hire and union apprenticeships?
I absolutely would support your local hire. I think that's important, having me to think about it. These businesses are coming in, you know, they're constructing in our city. We should have a certain percentage of the workforce, of their workforce, be part of our citizens. And I really do believe that we need to have that in.
Thank you, Fred Singh, same question.
Yes, I've been advocating that the whole time. It's on my flyer in the map, the six apprentice programs that are currently available in Ventura County. All you need to be is 18 to apply. And all of our jobs in the city should have been local hire. You can't keep telling me why aren't people working when you're not giving them the jobs and you're bringing people from Utah and Texas and their crews and they're staying at our hotels, great, and they're spending a week at Denny's, but not another dollar comes into our city other than that.
Thank you, Laurie.
The last five campaigns, pick your number. My car said one thing on the back, local labor for local jobs. By having local labor and local jobs, that money stays in the community and stays and recycles to the community. When payroll leaves the county, that leaves the area. You might need to stay in there. Not everybody sues for college. We have many people growing older and getting out of the trade due to retirement and other activities. An apprentice program needs to be encouraged because not everybody sues for college or wants to go to college. A good trade is a carpenter, panel electrician can make a living wage. How many people don't want to work for a union? Union benefits are one of the prized things of anybody who wants a job to support their family. Local labor for local jobs and have those conducive to current contracts. I believe state law already sets aside money with this. And again, we have labor laws and the fact that the earnings wages have to be paid for all jobs for a given government work.
Thank you, Gabriella.
This is like right up my alley, this is what I think of my living. Local hire I am a total supporter of. Depending on where the money comes to fund these projects, there's rules and regulations that are in place. Federal law says that there is a minimum wage that we have to pay, we have to go out to bid. I have to look at the Oxnard contracts. Our city council should be looking at these contracts and be asking the right questions in order to get the right answers. If that means our procurement policy in the city needs to change, then that is something that the council can do as a policy change. But I am in total favor of keeping our money here locally.
Thank you, and as a reminder to the audience, if you have a question, just raise your hand and one of our volunteers will bring you a card. We're going to start with you Fred Singh on the next question. Much of districts five or six border the city of Port Wainievi. So tell us, what would you do to form a better working relationship with the city of Port Wainievi?
So I do a lot with the city of Port Wainievi now through the Wainievi Chamber. That's one of my 10 jobs. And a lot of it, they attempt to communicate with Oxnard and they get the same thing I get. A week, you have to go through this department, this agency. There's no coming to the table. We just have a new city manager, so I don't know if he's established a relationship with Mr. Butler yet in the city, but that's imperative. They should be meeting all the time because we're sharing resources, especially police and fire. So we really need to be having those conversations.
Thank you, Bea, same question to you about working better with the city of Port Wainievi?
Well, it all starts with communication, of course. I think we need to look beyond the city, working with our elected officials, but also our school districts. Some people don't realize that the school districts, the Wainievi Elementary School District covers both the city of Oxnard and the city of Port Wainievi. So we need to look at the different levels and bringing those two together, whether it's setting up, you know, quarterly roundtables or setting times where we can sit down and bring some of those issues. But it starts with the setting of time and doing one meeting, doing one gathering and going from there.
Thank you, Lawrence, same question to you.
It's the impression I have from my senior staff that senior staff is very arrogant and part of senior staff is self-serving. When asked two weeks ago at a meeting of all candidates, when will my questions get answered, the answer was when I get elected. We need to have a staff that is more open and transparent and not just say the words. I ask for questions, I ask questions and get answers and staff does not answer these questions. And how can expect, have current staff maintain a relationship with another city if it cannot maintain a strong relationship with its residents? As a council member, I'll try to establish the barrier that senior staff has for the public to have a more committed to activities in place, both with the citizens as well as the entire county region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carolina, same question to you about working with the city of Wainievi?
I would say as good neighbors, we should keep our communication open. Perhaps join events for our youth. And that's basically what I will advocate for, having something for our youth with the city of Port Wainievi and city of Oxnard at the same time.
Thank you, Gabriella, your views on working with the city of Wainievi?
Well, since I am an employee of the city of Wainievi, might be a little bit of conflict of interest here. But I do have to say that as housing authority manager, I work very closely sometimes with the Oxnard Housing Authority. They call me as a resource and I use them as a resource also. I can probably bring those resources to Oxnard and have them contact the right individual within our city department in order to work more closely with them.
Thank you, Louise, we'll wrap up with you, other question.
So, Oxnard's fire chief once said, I was in a meeting once and he said that he or Oxnard's fire department and Wainievi's fire department have an unwritten rule that they will share resources as needed. And I think that's where it starts. I think that we need to, as you know, several folks up here have said, we need to communicate. We need to have ongoing communication, we need to set up quarterly, monthly meetings so that we can share ideas. We have a lot in common besides border. And so I think that we need to sit down, agree to communicate with these individuals and make sure that we're sharing those ideas and where possible, sharing those resources.
Thank you, Lawrence, we're going to start the next question with you. And have you or are you a member of any neighborhood councils? If so, which one? And do you have a story to share with the audience about something you may have done to improve your neighborhood or district?
Currently, I'm not sitting on any neighborhood activities. Previously, 10, 15 years ago, I was president of my neighborhood. I was a member of the INCF, I was fourth vice chair of INCF. I sat on the College Park Advisory Committee. I've served the city as a private citizen for 20-plus years, participating in numerous activities, both the city council, planning commission, school district meetings. But currently, I'm not actively involved in those activities. I spend my time reading reports and providing analysis. What I bring to community are ideas. In 1992, I talked about tertiary treatment wastewater. I talked about building up and not building out. We now have a grid open in place, now building high rises to replace the single-family homes. So I may have not been elected, but my ideas have been adopted and will continue to be adopted whether elected or not.
Thank you, and next we'll go to Louise. Have you been on a neighborhood council, which one? And what have you done to improve your neighborhood?
So I live in District Six in Pleasant Valley Village. We have an inactive neighborhood council. And so to answer the question, no, I have not been part of one. However, I have attended several neighborhood council meetings. If I'm not elected, I will start or reactivate our neighborhood council. If I am elected, I promise to find someone who will restart our neighborhood council. I think that's where it starts. I think that's where we need to get our community together. We need to get our, everyone really talking about what our needs are. I think that's part of the reason why South Oxnard has been neglected by the city. And so we need to have that communication.
Thank you, Bea, same question. Have you been on any neighborhood councils? And what have you done, maybe any stories about improving the neighborhood?
So I haven't served on a neighborhood council, but I certainly have attended a couple of meetings. So having, you know, having that presence, taking it back, it really starts at home. What are we doing within our home to make sure that we're contributing to show our street, our respective neighborhoods that we care about, about that area? So I think that's where it starts, is looking at our street, looking at our surroundings and as simple as keeping our sidewalks clean on our own, it falls on us.
Thank you, we'll move on to Gabriella.
I have not served in any neighborhood councils. What have I done for the community? I had the opportunity to be at the 7-Eleven last week and I had two individuals come up to me, all ahead, red pants, white t-shirts. They thought I was selling phones. They asked me, what is this for? And I went ahead and told them what I was doing, I was running for Oxnard City Council. They shared their stories with me. One was on parole, he even offered to give me his parole officer's number. Then he asked me, can you find me a job? That is what I can do for the community, I can engage my community. I can look for resources that will have, that will help our community and our youth.
Thank you, Fred Singh, same question to you. Have you served on any neighborhood councils? Tell us a story about helping to improve the neighborhood.
Yes, I've served for five years for, as the chair of Cal Missler. We reactivated that neighborhood, myself and a neighbor of mine. In our recent elections, we elected a new chair for that neighborhood. We brought back the neighborhood cleanup. We got Gumtree Alley cleaned up and we have constant cleanup with it now. We got the lights replaced at Rose and Oxnard Boulevard, just that intersection unfortunately, but we're working towards more. We've got Channel Islands Boulevard, now it's scheduled late October to get redone after we've had our third death on Channel Islands and Coy. And not to mention the other deaths as people speedway through there. And also, I worked with Tom Holden to get the crosswalk at Woolley Road at Driffler School when my daughter was a student there.
Thank you, Carolina, same question to you.
Hi, yes, I'm very involved with my community. I am part of St. Win's Neighborhood Council. And we do cleanups and also in the summer, we launch a food pantry for the most needed. And everybody is welcome. We do food distribution twice a month, second and fourth Saturday of the month. And I am very proud because I see the need of the people when they go to get their food. And they are happy and they take not just junk, but it's just canned good, dairy. And we get that as donations, so. So, yes, I'm very involved with my community.
Thank you. Carolina, we're going to start the next question with you, this is a little different than the others, but in the city of Oxnard, there are oil wells. And the question is, do you support a ban on fracking or steam injection of some new oil wells within the city? And you could just share with us your thoughts about oil and gas in the city.
I'm not too familiar in that issue. I would rather look into it before I give you an answer.
Thank you. Francine, same question to you.
Well, if it's to reopen the current wells, I know that's part of their process. As far as a brand-new well, no, an EIR has to be done before we make one hole. Because what people aren't realizing is when they're fracking in the farmland, we're not doing enough studies to see if that affects what grows in that farmland. And some of the fracking is happening on our farmland. Now, if it's happening outside where it's known oil, like out in Ojai, out in Fillmore, where they have those wells, then an EIR report needs to be done, it needs to go through the county and then the city approval if necessary, if it affects us.
Thank you. Gabriella, same question to you.
We need to make sure that we are doing our homework before we support anything like the old wells and all that stuff. So I would really need to make sure that our environment and we are looking at everything that we need to look at before we can support.
Thank you. V and A, would you support a ban on fracking or steam injection of new oil wells within the city?
I think we need to look at what the impacts have been so far on our community. What, with what currently exists, how has that benefited or negatively affected our community? That's where we need to start. Because we need to care for the health first of our residents. And looking at that, keeping these companies that are coming into this area to put their oil wells, holding them accountable on what is happening to our residents and how they can make sure to clean up what they are leaving behind. So I would highly consider a ban with the input from our community on what you believe we need here and how it's affecting us.
Thank you. Louise, same question to you.
So everyone has heard what fracking has done to the Midwest. There's a lot of problems out here because of fracking. Would I support a ban on it? You know, I probably would say that I think we need to do some of the environmental reviews and see what impact that's going to have on our fields, on our field workers, before we actually move forward. As I stand right now, I would say yes, I would support a ban on that, only because I think that we still need to do more homework on that and really dive into it. And if we do allow that to occur in the city, then I think that we need to ensure that the contracts are set up properly so that they will come in and clean up and make sure that they're responsible for any mess they leave behind.
Thank you. Lawrence, same question.
The issue of oil wells in the city is a new issue. Instead of oil wells in the city, they're actually not in the city, but on kind of property. So it's kind of laws and regulations that control the permitting of our oil and gas fields. Oxnard sits on top of a large amount of natural gas beneath our soil. The oil sits two miles below our soil in Oxnard. This area is full of oil and again, there are issues of private mineral rights that are controlled by the oil companies and the people that own the oil wells. The city cannot control those permits. So any oil well or fracking takes place is outside of control of the city government. It's usually under control of the county government. The city government can help encourage and provide policy direction towards the county. A planned building tank farm outside of Oxnard took place a year and a half ago.
Thank you. We'll start our next question. Louise, you're up first this time. Question is, if you're elected, and as a reminder, this is the first time we've ever had district elections in Oxnard. So for District Six, if you are elected, what would be your top two priorities specific? And this is underlined many times specifically. What will you do to accomplish those priorities? Please be as specific as possible.
So, two things. First thing, cleanup. We absolutely need to clean up our neighborhood, especially in District Six. So what I would do is, again, I go back to communication, making sure that we communicate with our neighborhood councils, making sure that we get everybody out to talk, to figure out what the issues are, specific to their block even, and figure out, you know, what those issues are, take that back to the city and make sure that we clean that up. The second piece is, that I've seen here, is gangs. I do believe that we need to clean that up more. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I grew up in south-central LA. I grew up during a time where gang injunctions in LA were big. And I believe that those gang injunctions have done property, will clean up our streets.
Thank you. We'll go on to Gabriella. Same question, your top two priorities specifically, how will you accomplish them?
Specifically, my two top priorities are going to be public safety and infrastructure. We need to, and when I mean public safety, I want to assure that our police department and our fire have the resources necessary to do their job. They are, after all, our first responders. But not only that, along with that comes community engagement. We need to hit our youth and we need to hit them young and we need to be engaging. We need to engage them young. Somewhere, we are losing them to gangs, to crimes. It is very evident here in South Oxnard. We need to do a better job with that. And I am looking to our first responders to guide us and to be that force in the community. The other thing is infrastructure. We need to clean up our streets, we need to beautify them, we need to make sure that our roads are paved and enticing. We do host the Strawberry Festival at Oxnard College Park. We should be cleaning those [inaudible] areas that are...
I have to stop there. Okay, Carolina, same question to you. What are your top two priorities and specifically, how will you accomplish them?
We need stronger community engagement and focusing on the youth, advocating for more youth programs, especially for our District Six community. The other one would be public justice. We need to advocate for more public justice. We need to have our community safe. So we need to advocate for those issues. And infrastructure too, as well.
Thank you. Larry, same question to you.
The first thing I'd like to insist upon is monthly financial statements that are accurate. We got the June financial statements in September. As an accountant, if I didn't have my financial statements done within ten days of a month then, I would have lost my job. To wait two months for financial statements that are inaccurate is inexcusable. The fact we have a $300 million budget and we cannot give accurate financial statements is appalling. The second thing I would insist upon is having a surplus budget. A breakeven budget does not do any good. You need to set aside funds for long-term emergencies and large-term capital improvement projects. Again, a balanced budget that's reported monthly and having strong financial controls in place.
Thank you. And V and A, same question to you.
I think we all have the same concern in this area that, especially when we constantly drive from one end of the city to the other, that we can see the difference of what the north side has versus the south side. So I first want to make sure that we are receiving the services, looking, for example, specifically at our roads. The neighborhood where I live in Redwood, it took over six months for our roads to be paved with dirt and gravel everywhere for six months, and that should not be happening. The rest of our neighborhoods should have our roads paved, just like the rest of the city. So I want to start there by asking. And the other areas is working with our youth. I don't think we have as much engagement with our school district, specifically Wayne Eme, which covers seven of the eight districts or neighborhoods in District Six, so working closely with them.
Thank you. And we'll go to Francine to wrap up this question.
So the first thing we need to do with the city is bring the Inspector General's office in and do a forensic audit of all departments. We need to know what's coming in and what's going out. We know the revenue's coming in, but no one can give us a definitive answer on what's going out. So before we build a park, build a street, or do anything, I need to know what's in the bank. Because we keep charging this card and we're going to max out sooner than later. The other thing is, we don't have any services in South Oxnard for our youth. We don't have a Boys' and Girls' Club, we don't have a WAD, we got nothing. The closest thing is on Seventh Street. So there's no way some kid that lives off of Beaumont or further south can get over there and back. We don't have anything for them. So we need to bring a service provider to offer South Oxnard services for youth.
Thank you. We're going to make this the last question. There's several here that'll really deal with the problems in South Oxnard. Many of you have talked about this, roads, litter, that type of thing. And you've given your answers. So I'm going to ask you on this last question. Tell us about the skills you have to work within a city, to understand what the problems are and really get something solved, rather than just, I'm going to talk to you. Tell us what your background, your skills are, that'll make a real difference here in South Oxnard. And Larry, you're up first.
I've been involved as a private citizen, activities for twenty-five-plus years. I first ran for city council in the 90s and I've run for other offices since then. I've worked with many department heads who are all along with the city. I've known where some of the skeletons are buried or some of the problems are. The main issue is working with our senior staff. And senior staff has changed so many times. We've had four senior managers the last three years. We've had five CFOs in the last six years. I've lost count on the number of senior managers we have. We have instability on the fourth floor. What I bring is the ability to work with companies. My background is small office accounting response. This is, I did that for twenty-five years. I set up accounting systems and trained staff. I know how to run numbers through, what numbers should look like. And I'm qualified because I don't have to relearn what's going on in the city because I've been involved with C activities for twenty-five-plus years.
Thank you. Louise, same question to you.
So I've worked with two local municipalities in my career, here in Oxnard, but also up in the Santa Barbara area. I understand their pain points. I've met with city managers and understand their pain points. Recently, there was a city treasurer meeting here and I don't know if anyone's aware of this, but you know, the funds are tax dollars that are placed with banks in, actually not in Oxnard, but in Ventura County for safekeeping. Those dollars are actually not reinvested back into the city. I feel that we need to, our tax dollars to be reinvested back into the city and I know a way that we can do that. So I feel that my experience with leading committees and different types of projects really led to improved city services here in Oxnard.
Thank you. V and A, same question to you. Tell us about your background or skills that are actually translating into getting things done.
All right, well, having grown up in this area, I have also served on the Wayne Eme Elementary School District Board for the past six years. I know how to work with the board of four other five members. And during this time, I have also worked for two of our elected officials at the state and federal level. So I bring in that knowledge of what resources are available through the state, what we can do on the federal side, and how we can work well with people. I've been involved in other organizations in the community and that has, we have to be able to work well with people, bringing people to the table in order to get things done, because we're not going to do it on our own individually and we're not going to do it on our own within the city.
Thank you. Gabriella, same question to you.
I have a passion for public service, it is all I know. I bring a lot of expertise to the table. I am familiar with budgets. I've done budgets, I work with budgets every day, I have the ability to ask the tough questions. And I know when city staff is just kind of not answering questions, I bring knowledge, I bring leadership, I bring the ability to get things done. That is what I hope to bring if I'm elected to the Yolster City Council.
Thank you. Francine.
So the biggest experience I bring is from my time in the Army. I served in the US Army, I was a 77 fox trot with an 88 mic. What does that mean? I fueled planes. I fueled anything that required fuel and I had less than thirty minutes to do it. You had to work with people that you just, we did not see eye to eye. It's about going in, getting the job done, and getting out. That is something our city council has long forgotten and so has staff. It's about getting the job done. And everybody I've worked with in this room and everywhere else can tell you, I go in, I get the job done and we get out. And that's it. And that's the biggest skill I bring, the ability to work with people and just get things done.
Thank you. Carolina will wrap up with you.
Okay, I have responsible management skills for over twenty years and leadership as well. At my, at the program where I work, I have a food program, just similar to the one in the school, which I launched that program as well. So I am responsible for the daily running and I am outed every three years. And so far, for the past twelve years, I haven't had any issues with financials. So I know how to run financials, I know how to review financials. And I also run my own business with the State of California Department of Social Services for about, since 2013, never had any issues. So I know how to manage well.
Thank you. We're going to begin closing statements, but before we do, how about a round of applause for all of these volunteers. Gabriella will start with you, but one moment before we do, I'd like to just take a moment to acknowledge all of our volunteers here. Meline and Carmen up here at the front table, our timers, Betsy and Maddie, we had Karen, Adela, Suki, Diana, and we also had Carol and Doris helping us tonight. So how about a round of applause for all of the volunteers. This is a important forum just this week, where it's me valley last night. Next week, we have four more as well. So thank you to everybody who's working so hard. So with that, we're going to go ahead and start with closing statements. You have one minute. We'll begin with Gabriella.
Thank you. There is no doubt that South Oxnard faces major challenges from failing in infrastructure, crime, homelessness, and even affordable housing. I am committed to working with city staff to bring new ideas and innovations forward into the city. With District Five being so close to the one at Ormond Beach, we have the ability to bring in jobs and to bring in tax dollars. I have the leadership skills, knowledge, and experience in federal and local government to do just that, to move our community forward. But more importantly, I know the community. I was raised in the community and I am a proud product of the community. I ask for your vote on November 6th. For more information, please visit my website at www.gabriellabusua.com.
Thank you. And Gabriella's District Five, as is Lawrence Stein, our next candidate.
Many of you, the city council meetings are watched on TV. You see, city council members ask questions, staff gives a response, the last thing you hear is that. I plan to create a different focus, city council, when elected. I won't let softball issues just pass me by. I'm going to hit back and ask for answers to questions that are specific to the questions at need. Staff does not answer questions in the city council. When I do ask questions and promised answers, those answers are not delivered in public. I will try to get answers to the questions. If they're not answered that night, I'll try to have those items placed on the agenda for a direct answer in public from city staff. Some of you know me for being a wonderful person, some of you might think otherwise. I bring aggressiveness, attack to the table.
Thank you. Our next candidate, now we're into District Six, Francine Castleton.
So again, thank you all for being here this late and taking the time to be here. What I'm hoping to bring is financial stability, the ability to get things done and move the process. The city for far too long has been a clog. You have to call the mayor, you have to call city council, just to get them to pick up your trash can. It shouldn't be... It shouldn't be like that anymore. We have good talent here that we're not giving jobs to, opportunities, and our public safety has been neglected far too long. Seven out of our eight stations are literally falling apart, and that has to change. Enough's enough, and it's time to get things done in Oxnard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, also District Six, is Louise.
So I appreciate the fact that most of my counterparts here have probably been born and lived here most of their lives. I've only been here three years. But in three years, I know I want to get involved. I want to clean up our streets. I want to deal with our contracts, our city contracts that we have with our vendors and hold their feet to the fire. I want all of our tax dollars reinvested back into the city. I want us to have better jobs. I want us to have better housing. And in the end, I want to die here in Oxnard. I want to die a proud Oxnard, Oxnardian because of the cause. So I bring, I bring a lot of things to the table. So those of you that are out there, you know, those of you that are watching on TV, please think about who you're going to vote for. You need to vote for someone who's really going to make a difference here and who's really going to deal with the tough issues and ask those tough questions. I believe in that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Carolina.
Hi, I believe I am the person who should be representing you in the city council. Why? Because I care for my community. I am strongly involved with my community, and I am always advocating for the most needed and the underserved. We need someone who can identify themselves with our people, someone who lives their lifestyle, someone who they can trust and they can approach at any time, and not someone who will be hard to reach, someone who will follow through with our promises. I will not fail you, and I will always advocate for all residents in all areas of Oxnard, especially for District Six. Please vote for me on November 6th. You want to find out more about me, please visit my webpage, carolinaforoxnard.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is V and A for District Six.
It would be my true honor to serve you on the city council as your first District Six council member. I hope to have your vote on November 6th and that you have confidence in the experience that I bring, but more than anything, the passion that I have for this community and the reason why I decided to run was to be a voice and speak up for the services and what we need in this area, including our infrastructure, improving our roads, working on our public safety and our communication with our, with our residents, and bringing our youth, holding, keeping them here so that they don't feel the need to leave and offering them the services so that they can thrive and the rest of our community and our families can have a good quality life here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry if we didn't get a chance to answer your questions either in the mayoral forum or this one. We try to get to everything that we can. Do want to remind you, we have the membership table in the back if you're interested in getting information on the propositions on this year's ballot. And with that, I'd like to just thank all of you for coming out. It was a pleasure to be in South Oxnard. And don't forget that you're going to vote in District Five or District Six. The last date of register to vote is October 22nd. Thank you all, have a great night.